Okay, we'll call the regular city council meeting from Moose Lake Wednesday, October 8th to order. First thing is pledge allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Next, may I have the approval of the agenda? Certain additions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No second.
All favor?
Aye.
Phones carried. Consent agenda on the regular city council meeting from September 10th, 2025. The financial reports, city council table, September 2025, city financial statement, September 2025, and the liquor store profit and loss statement, September 2025. Any questions of those? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Phones carried. Public comment. This time is reserved for comments from the public. None is not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to two minutes.
Am I going to come up or anything?
Yes.
I just had one question regarding the portion of last year's budget and this year's budget that is not being used for law enforcement services, what that's going to be used for? If there's been a decision on that, or if there's any plans on what may, what it may be used for?
Alyssa?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are waiting to get our invoicing from the sheriff's office, and so that happens on an ongoing basis. And today, today, we're going to announce some additional staffing. That's occurred with deputies for Moose Lake. There's an introduction in place. And so once those items are kind of hashed out, and then from the administrative perspective, they issue the city an invoice, then we can look at budget versus what's remaining and what's going out. So there will need to be dialogue about what those numbers look like. We're almost there, but not quite there yet.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You too. Any other public comment? Moving on, department reports for the county sheriff's office.
Good afternoon. Providing, start here, provide the activity report for the month of September 2025. So there were a total of 134, 135 calls for service by the contract deputies and 111 calls for service handled by the other county deputies for the month of September. Should all have the breakdown in your packets. Thirty-two were actual calls for service from the public. The others were various forms of self-initiated activity, to include 63 extra patrols in details, 14 traffic stops, 14 business checks, and six on view public assists. Any questions about the activity report?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. To give a little bit of a staffing update, to start with internally administratively in sheriff's office, we made some administrative changes. I have taken on more of an administrative role within the sheriff's office as an administrative lieutenant. So with that, we promoted a new patrol lieutenant, Lieutenant Ryan Rehnquist is here tonight. So he will be taking, or he has already taken over direct supervision of the patrol division, including the patrol deputies and the contract deputies. So you will start to see him more at your city council meetings along with Sheriff Lake. So with that, we were able to bring the third contract deputy on board the first part of September. So he's been on for a few weeks. Deputy Ryan Lund is here. Introduce himself to the city council and the city staff.
Hi, Ryan. I've been at the sheriff's office since April for Polk PD for many years. I'm excited to come up down here and get to know everybody.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And in addition to that, we are, we have Deputy Megan Conley, who also came to us from Polk Lake Police Department, who has a couple of years' experience there. She is in her final stage of field training. Her field training should wrap up at the end of next week, and she will be assigned down here after that. So we will have a fourth deputy in place before the end of the month.
Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, Lieutenant.
I'm here, members of the council, Administrator Owens. We'll start the water department like we always do. Water department distributed 7.2 million gallons drinking water in the month of September. Hydrant flushing was completed last month. It's very early for this, but we're seeing a lot of water breaks. Seven, we've had September 24th, 361 Lake Shore Drive, we had a water break. September 25th, 91 Arrow Lane, we had a water break. And I'm sure everyone is aware of the two water routes we have here next week on Elm and Forest Street. Just so everyone knows, there will be some road closures, the 13th through the 15th with intermittent water on and off, on and off kind of thing. Might be some cloudy water, dirty water, maybe no water for a little while, but we are, we will be working on those next week. Sewer department, collection system, that number is not correct. Oh, God. I have it somewhere. Our inflow is somewhere between 10 and 12 million gallons. I have 27. It's not. 27 was the F1 going out of our wastewater facility last month. So that was our last discharge. The annual sanitary sewer cleaning maintenance program is kind of taking a backseat this year. We are getting it done. It's just it's taken all summer to get that done, as we can only dedicate one to two days a week towards that with about 30,000 feet of pipe decline. So it's a, it's a large project for, for our crew. The treatment facility this fall and winter, I'll be attending a couple of trainings in St. Cloud. There's one in Brainerd, and then there's a couple in on the range that I'm going to go to. Trying to find more options and avenues for us to gain capacity at our wastewater facility. The bug program came from there. The lighting program we're doing came from those trainings. And then there was something else that's been just, I can't remember what it is off the top of my head, that, that is giving me trains as well. So I'll be bopping around a little bit, a couple of trains here or there. Street department, railways, road patching, we're going to be doing that like crazy. Next couple of weeks, still hopping, still in shutdown, which will be about the end of this month. Equipment, I gave an update on that last month. Cemeteries are all buttoned up and winterized. Campground will be winterized next week. The parks are closed for the year. We have some park stuff to talk about later tonight. Other than that, I think that's it for right now. We have some more stuff to talk about later, unless someone has some questions, of course.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Have you figured out with the water and I, what you're going to do at that first tree down intersection for Halloween?
Great. Thanks for bringing that up. I did reach out to the power plant superintendent last week. Got a communication back from him saying that they're going to try to get that button up sooner than we would. So that's, that's what I know for now. I could definitely put another bug in his ear to see if we can clean that up. I know it's getting into winter. I would assume they want to get that project wrapped up. I know I want to get all of our projects wrapped up, so.
Well, even if they can't get it, whatever covered up, they, they're going to have to put some sort of fencing around there.
Some type of better barricades.
Child.
That is their plan.
Okay. Thank you. Cool.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes for liquor store department report.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Rochelsky, Administrator Owens. Liquor stores going great. Oktoberfest, I met with Sean from the brewery. We had a recap session from his standpoint. Everything went awesome. He wanted to extend his greatest gratitude to Steve, the park supervisor, was really on top of it, was, had everything ready to go. He was available by the phone. So good job, Steve and Phil's crew. Let's see. Thanks for the consensus right away for the Viking scheme last Sunday. So just an idea, I just ran a quick, quick number. We did 3463 for revenue that day and the, or sorry, 3655 in the average Sunday revenue was 3463 last year. So made a couple hundred extra bucks by opening up early. So in my eyes, anyway, so that's really good. I did distribute the December sneak peek calendar to you guys. You can just take a look at it. Otherwise, everything's going really well. We're looking at capital and revenue items for budget for next year. So things are good. And I have some other financial stuff as far as Oktoberfest coming up later in the financial report. If you have any questions.
Questions municipal?
You'll be covering this later?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
F L G department?
Uh, not a whole lot there. Pretty quiet. So that's nice. Let's see. I'm waiting on an install date and delivery for Laura's computer for the library. Otherwise, status quo.
Any questions?
Thank you. Modern rain department. Well. Library, sorry.
Hello, members of council, mayor and city administrator. So yeah, I'm here for my quarterly library report. The last three months have gone well for the library. It was the summer reading program. So in July and August, we had over 1,700 people come in each month. And then September came and we, we use, lose a few hundred people that come in once everyone starts going back to school. So we only had about 1,500 people coming into library for September. But our summer reading program went really well. That started at the very beginning of July and went to August 15th. And so we ended with 103 participants that had signed up and participated in our summer reading program. We had some amazing programs, the Zimmobile, always very popular, the live animals. We also had like singing programs and learning science museum program, crafts and scavenger hunts. And just very recently, we had a felting program. So that was really great. I've heard great things about that. And hopefully we'll be able to have her come back and do that again. Coming up later this month, we do have a musical program, Kelly, their folk musical performance. They weave together culture and history. So you can learn a bit about the musical people from Minnesota. So that'll be later in this month. And then we'll also have a painting program too. So we're trying to keep up with lots of fun programs in the library. It is a little bit quieter until we get to December when we start our winter reading program. And one of the programs we do have still continuing is our book club that we started this year. That has still had very good retention for people coming and participating in the book club. So if people still want to come, they're welcome to join the last Thursday of each month. We do take a break in November, December for the holidays, but then we'll start up again in January. Any questions?
What time is that at?
On the Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, it's at 10 a.m.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Modern vehicle department?
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi. Just to fill in what's going on in our office, I guess.
Can you pull the mic down, please?
Tell me I'm short. We went to our M D R A meeting in September, which was very interesting and always informational. One of the things that was the topic of discussion was two years ago in January 24, we had that dollar surcharge that the state gave us on every driver's license renewal and title. And they want to quit that. It was just supposed to be a temporary thing. So our lobbyist is fighting for that internet session to keep that on for us. We just did a quick thing this afternoon, and in the last couple of years, that's almost brought us $30,000. Just that dollar per application. So that's great to see. And I don't want it to go away. So hopefully it won't. It's a big income. Other topic of discussion was our revenue sharing. So that would be if a customer did an application online or mailed in their renewal. They're talking about sharing those profits from where the customer is a resident of. That will be another thing that will be going through the legislature that they're working on. Also, D N R was there too. Their new program has not been finished. It was supposed to be done back in March, but they've been having a lot of issues. And they've just gotten another company involved to help with the completion of that. I'm a little worried about it because that new program will allow people to renew online boats, A T Vs and snowmobiles, and also for their fishing, hunting, and licensing and harvesting and all that. We don't do those harvesting and all that, but the A T Vs and boats and all that. So hopefully that won't hurt our business at all when that does come up. In them, they'll be having some training for us on that new system. We're also starting to get our no fee transactions as of August 1st. All the, not all of them, but there's a list of no fee transactions that we do quite often in our office that we've never gotten paid for through the state. And we will now be getting, the customer will not pay for them, but the state will pay us back. Either it could be some $2, $4, $8, $11 per transaction. That started in August, and it will be every third month. So this, we should be getting our first payment by October 15th. So we're kind of curious to see how that will go and how much it'll be. They're still working on the program for us to be able to look to see a countdown of what we are actually seeing processing for free. So let's see. Let's see. Legislate, they were trying to pass where driver's license could be renewed for replacements or like duplicates online. That was rejected. So luckily that was shut down. So we hope that doesn't come up again. That would be devastating for our office if that happened. We also had a speaker that talked about de-escalation, sergeant from St. John. He was very funny. He was a fast doctor. He'd been in service there for a long time, and it was very informational and fun. We also had a fraudulent speaker about vehicles, people that buy vehicles on Marketplace, that are vehicles that are stolen. And people fall into it. And they, it's a company and they'll go to somewhere in Montana that is a, and they can get a title and registration and not have to pay tax. And before everybody that pays the huge amount for some vehicle, they go to the D M V and they can't transfer it. It's fraudulent. So they're just saying beware if you're ever buying a vehicle online to look at everything and not, if it's a good deal, probably not a good deal. You're wasting your money. We also, since the Stillwater prison is shutting down, the delivery of our license plates have been an issue because they usually deliver our plates and bring them right in and put them right in their closet. So now they have no one to do that. So a lot of D M V offices have been sending pictures about, they leave them outside the door. They don't let them know they're there. They're out broken pieces. You know, the plates are coming out. So they're trying to figure that out, how they're going to deliver. They're checking into like regular delivery companies to be delivering, but we're going to be having to do more hands on, bringing them in their office and putting them in. So hopefully they give us a heads up when they're coming, but they never have before. They kind of just show up. So hopefully they will. We had some training today about driver's licenses changing for us. We are going to be having to put applications that we take from real IDs and emails with all the documents that we have to scan in. And we have to enter them into our system differently into certain buckets. So that, those will be a little bit more time consuming for us. We're doing more for, more for them too. But I guess that's about it. Except I just want to say that Chris has been working with us for a few months, and we're glad to have her on in our office. I mean, enjoying having her.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Fire dance department?
All right, I'm back. All right, let's see. First in your packet, I believe, is the muni analysis. That's for Oktoberfest. See, you have the pro forma, it's the first column, the actual, and the variance over there. So the pro forma numbers of bar sales for the event, I just took what actually we got from bar sales last year. So you'll see we made an additional 82 books this year. That's sales at the event itself. Revenue at the muni, again, I just took what we did last year at the muni, a little bit short of what we did last year. Ticket sales, that's new. So I just used my own experience. I put down, I figured we'd get about 2,000 bucks. We ended up with 2420. So made 420 bucks. Campground, again, had no idea. So I just put what we made in the campground last year, and then what we did this year, and I attributed that to Oktoberfest and the promo code, you know. So 235 bucks there. Then you'll see the expenses, entertainment, 3,300 bucks, wages, roughly 350, advertisement, 1740, nothing in the other. And then what we actually did, 3,300. That's because I knew that's how much it was going to cost, 289. So we had spent a little less in wages down there. Advertisement, I knew what we would, that would cost there, and then the total down there. So all in all, pretty good event. Talked to Sean from the brewery, and he was very forthcoming with how they performed. So they actually made a little bit of money this year. So they're very happy. They're looking forward to next year. All's looking good. We have some ideas on make it better next year as well. So any questions on that? Campground analysis. So September wrapped up. This is kind of just updated numbers of what you guys have seen in the past. So nothing changed in the seasonal revenue 2025, seasonal revenue 2024, because that's just is what it is. They were all paid up. You can see our site counts are down a little bit, but remember, we changed some of those sites to seasonal. Wood were up a little bit over previous year, and ice were up almost double from last year. So that's awesome. And then all encompassing, we still outperformed last year by about 21,641. Any questions on the campground? Yes, all.
Who did we get the wood from?
Lionel.
And this is the profit?
That is not the profit. That is just revenue versus revenue last year. These are just revenue numbers. No costs in here. Or we'd be rich, 192,000. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to this other one. You do not have this in your packet, but it's this form here, just kind of something that I'm doing off to the side. It really helps with strategic planning. This is the municipal liquor store. And because we closed off September, that also closes out our summer month, our summer quarter. On the very left, that's the sum of revenue for day of the week. So 2025, we did 591, 709, 87. Last year was really good, 637. In the year prior for 2023, 627. And then in the middle there is just kind of a bar graph illustrating that by day of the week. And then up to the right is something I like to look at, and I thought maybe you guys would like to see it, is an average revenue of the day of the week for that quarter. Just kind of something for you to look at, if you want, I guess.
Any questions?
Any questions on this? There's some multitude of things in way, different ways I can look at this stuff. But these are some things I've used in the past, and it helps. So.
Thank you.
All right. I do have one more quick note, not analysis related, but I did, I got an email from the A E O A. So it sounds like the senior dining, and everything will be back up and operational. They hired someone next Thursday, they said 16th of October. Just thought I'd share that.
Thank you. City engineer?
Yes, the council received two sets of meeting minutes as far as engineering is concerned for the month of September. Just a couple of highlights. We'll talk about other items later on in the meeting agenda. The city did have a coordination meeting with M S O P and D O C regarding the upcoming sewer lining project for 2026. That's a collaborative project funded off of the city's grant award of $658,000. The schedule, project schedule right now, it's still in the design phase. So a lot of the discussion at the meeting was regarding site access to the state facilities, record drawings, things of that nature. And so really trying to take an inventory and analyze what the infrastructure is between the facilities and the city's infrastructure. Moving on into the project bidding and award phase, that'll be January through February 2026. And then project construction will start in summer of 2026. So those activities are some of the things that city staff is coordinating with the engineers and the state facilities in the background. In addition, a couple of other items, the city was also awarded a grant from the M P C A for stormwater planning, essentially. And so it was a $76,000 grant from the M P C A, and it's going to help the city take inventory and analyze the city's storm sewer infrastructure. And so a lot of activity has been happening in the background of that, with that particular project. But we've also been coordinating with the Kettle River Upper St. Corrigan Watershed. And there's a funding opportunity through them that we have been investigating with the engineers. And so it's looking like there'll be some opportunities for the city to partner with the Kettle River Upper St. Corrigan Watershed to help with funding of the city's portion of the match for that particular stormwater inventory and analysis project. And then hopefully other items moving forward. So council will receive updates on that, but we're just trying to get creative even for funding the city's portion of some of these projects. And then trying to utilize all resources in the community and beyond as far as funding opportunities. So some really exciting stuff there. In addition, the city will be required to engage in an updated wellhead protection plan. That, the scope, scoping meeting for that will occur on October 28th. So if there's any questions regarding that, we'll be able to have some additional information for council then. We did receive the structural analysis for the depot through an engineering firm. We've not had an opportunity to, to review that. So that will be more coming to council soon. What that is, is the engineering report about the current state of the depot and the historical society buildings, and then what is needed moving forward. What was budgeted for from a city perspective is just that reporting and then turning it over to the historical society so that they can then utilize it to apply for funding to fix or update the building as needed. So more to come on that for council. And then one last item that we're working on with the engineers is the L R I P funding application. So there is L R I P funds coming available again. The city will be engaging in an application. Those project details and what that application will look like is being discussed internally and will also be brought forward to council as well.
Any questions? Dave, Moose Lake area chamber of commerce monthly update.
Well, as mayor, administrator, thank you for having me. My name is John Lund, and I'm on the floor of the Moose Lake area chamber of commerce. And just real quick updates. We had some recent events here. We held our first annual bingo event Saturday, or excuse me, Friday, September 19th. And it was And it was a little different. It wasn't a first bingo. It was an adventure bingo, so it sounded, I wasn't there personally, but it sounded like it was a very successful first, first event, and they're going to look at doing that again next year. We just took, just drew our annual raffle this afternoon. But we had a sporting theme. The winners will be contacted. And then also on the Facebook page, I think they're going to put in like the first, the ticket number, first name, and last initial. So check the Facebook page if you bought a ticket to see if you're a winner. And that wraps up pretty much our revenue producing events for the year. We do have some other upcoming events. Trunk or Treat will be Friday, October thirty-first at the Moose Lake City Park between three-thirty and six-thirty. And then the following day, Saturday, November first, the Lake Theater is going to have a free movie from Hotel Transylvania Three, sponsored by, I believe, it's United Country and Diamond Hands. Small business season is upon us. They're looking at doing a bingo card shopping thing. Committee's still meeting on that one, so the details are to be determined. Then Santa, the depot, kind of looking, we've worked with Ascension Health in the past. We're not sure if they're going to be on board this year, if it's going to be the chamber kind of taking that over. And then looking ahead to next year, we're going to have our annual dinner in January. So they're forming a committee to get the details on that. As far as the events for next year, we're in the planning phases of that. I can tell you that kitty parades on Friday, July third, in Moose Lake City Park, and thank you guys for that suggestion. And it worked out fantastic this year, and I think it was much safer for everyone involved. Fourth of July will be on Saturday, July fourth. Parade theme is still to be determined. Mega Days will be on Saturday and Sunday, July eighteenth and nineteenth. Brew Fest, we're debating whether or not we're going to have that next year. Numbers have been declining, so we're maybe looking at doing something different, and I'll get to that in a second. Nine and Nine Golf Event will be Friday, July twenty-fourth. And we might replace Brew Fest with a spring golf event, potentially in mid-May. We might also incorporate, we're throwing around some ideas, maybe incorporating some sort of Brew Fest or a table of beer tasting along with that. And we want to bring back the triathlon. We're evaluating that. That did not happen this year. Mainly because low participation numbers, low entry rates, so it was determined not to move forward with that just because of the costs involved. And then also, the bingo event was so successful, they're looking at doing a second event next year, so look for two bingo events. And then finally, we're going to be meeting, going over the membership for the upcoming year, just review our current membership levels and see if there's a way we can change those up, what would be more conducive to getting more people involved with the chamber, get more businesses in, so. Any questions for?
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Previously discussed business, American Legion playground design updates.
I believe there was going to be a member from the American Legion that was going to come talk about some of these design updates. I don't see a representative here, so we might want to table it until next month.
City parks playground discussion. Safety first playground maintenance compared to maintenance estimate.
Okay. As of last council meeting, AEI made a recommendation to, highly recommended, to reach out to safety first to see what they can do as far as fixing it and what cost estimates would be. So I did that. And essentially, they kind of give another inspection, so we're giving a second inspection for free out of it. So they came, and that's what you see in your packet. You see their estimates in there. I guess I could try to answer any questions you have. I don't, I'm not in great detail about some of the stuff in there, but.
So essentially, there are multiple estimates that have been provided regarding, you know, more immediate needs and repairs to each of the city's parks. You know, kind of.
And they're broken out by part.
Correct. So combining with the next area of discussion as far as recommendations and an action plan. Council did receive this document on the desk today, so essentially, we'll kind of start to talk through it. So one thing that we've been doing internally as a staff is reviewing the repair estimates and information provided through those inspections to figure out what is immediate and what we can address internally here. Those dialogues that occurred with city staff resulted in the following repairs, either being already completed and or scheduled to be completed in two of the parks. So we selected the parks that needed the least amount of repairs and that we could perform the most amount of activities in-house to make sure that we hit every single safety item that we needed to hit from a city safety perspective. So what has and or will occur at Roy Peterson Memorial Park is essentially addressing the slide gaps that were called out within the inspection. The bolts and caps that were itemized on that initial inspection report and on the estimates in the packet. New swings in order to accommodate those safety concerns as well. And then as far as the surface, so there, there needs to be, there's surface requirements depending upon how high your equipment is in the air and then what type of surface and impact capabilities of that material on the, on the ground. And so we will be looking at replacing wood chips in Roy Peterson Memorial Park in twenty-twenty-six. And just to remind council, we do have a partnership with Ascension that we're working through as far as updates at Roy Peterson, and so that'll be incorporated into the plan. So we were able to address internally all of the immediate concerns at Roy Peterson Memorial Park. As far as the main city park is concerned, the repairs that are being done by the city's public works team, again, addressing slide gaps, the bolts and caps, the need for a toddler swing and or infant swing that was called out within the reports, and then certain board replacements of the wood. And so those activities are occurring through the city's public works department. And again, addressing all immediate needs and concerns for the main city park. What additional has been called out within those estimates is the removal of some items. And so some of the conversation that city staff is looking to have with council today would be the removal of the items called out within the inspection report. That would be this, at the main city park, the swings that are located right next to the flagpole with that new flagpole project. The swings are, on that side are too close, and so they do need to be removed. In addition, there is a digger that needs to be removed and the tire swing. And so those are items that have been called out within these reports that we just wanted to make sure we had dialogue with council about regarding the removal of those.
I just want to make sure I know what swing set that you're talking about.
They are the set closest to the pavilion.
Closest to the pavilion.
Yeah, so not in that main area where the city playground structure is. They're across the sidewalk, closer to the pavilion.
Old metal ones.
The old metal ones that are, that, the original ones? Okay.
So essentially, with the repairs that the public works team has been able to and will be doing, in addition to the removal of those three items, we have addressed the safety concerns within those inspection reports at those two parks. The next layer of that conversation is in order to be able to direct funding towards a new city park, which is the ultimate, one of the priority, priority goals here would be decommissioning and removing the old school park. So the inspection report called out a significant amount of repairs that our, our team can, our public works team cannot do. And then with the removal and decommissioning of that park, then we'll be able to direct funding towards the main city park, which then kind of leads into the next agenda item. And so prior to these action items being addressed, which we are seeking action from council on, we'll talk about what the plan is moving forward for the main city park. So on this paper, there is a cost breakdown included in the packet. The, the city staff has been working really hard. Taylor's done a ton of work on this as well as far as working with Game Time Playground Equipment. And so something that Game Time offers, Game Time offers a fifty percent grant match on playground equipment that is categorized as eligible for that grant. So Taylor did some research. Taylor, if you want to take it over from here?
Yes, absolutely. So with the Game Time Playground Grant, there are specific playgrounds that are eligible. So he sent me over a catalog. We kind of looked through. We can have this manufactured in whatever color scheme we're, we're looking for. And the playground layout that we identify as best for the area that we're looking at came in at a hundred and three thousand dollars. Something that he was very transparent about was this could increase next year. So that's kind of where, we're, we're shooting our goal at a hundred and three thousand max. So there may be a need next year to reevaluate which play structure we're looking at depending on cost, but that's where we landed right now. He advised that we should budget about thirty percent of the equipment cost for installation and ten percent for freight. And then with our estimates that Ryan provided, we saw that resurfacing was going to cost about ten thousand dollars and then ten thousand dollars for the removal of the old structure. So with that knowledge, we're looking at around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a new playground in city park. With the fifty-fifty match, we can cut that by around fifty thousand dollars. I have already submitted an application for a Bernix grant that is up to forty thousand dollars. There are two other grants that I am looking to apply for next year. The first one is through the DNR, or sorry, there's one for next year. That is through the DNR. That could be anywhere up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but obviously not guaranteed. And I also reached out to Northwoods Credit Union to see if they would be interested in collaborating with us. They are going to bring that to their donations committee. However, I don't have any sort of gauge on what the amount, the dollar amount would be, their contribution. But they, they did express interest and said that they would like to contribute in some way. So we're, we're looking at that a hundred and sixty thousand dollar cost and trying to whittle that down to as little as possible.
Thank you, Taylor. So what this means from a budget perspective would be an initial allotment in twenty-twenty-six of half of the playground equipment. So what timeline would look like is in August of twenty-twenty-six, the city submits their proof that they have budgeted their half of the playground equipment to Game Time. Game Time then issues their fifty percent match, and then the, the playground is actually delivered and installed in twenty-twenty-seven. So from a budget perspective, looking to see if there is a consensus from council to incorporate the fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollar amount into the twenty-twenty-six budget. The other items as far as installation, freight, resurfacing, and removal, those would be in the gear towards the twenty-twenty-seven budget. But as Taylor had mentioned, we've already started work on looking for other funding sources and grants, so that these, this, these figures would be the worst-case scenario. And then the new city park would be installed then in twenty-twenty-seven. It gives us a lot of time to try and whittle any contribution from a city general fund perspective down as small as possible.
Questions, Chris?
So the park would not be, we, we'd fix what we need to fix for the meantime. It would be demolished then in the end of the twenty-six season, so it would be ready to be installed in twenty-seven?
It might be that, you know, as far as demolition or removal is concerned, it could, we could talk to them about carrying it over into twenty-twenty-seven. The new playground wouldn't arrive until twenty-twenty-seven. But we've made the necess, we are making the necessary updates for the main city park so that we can keep it in, into commission until the new playground would arrive. In addition, Roy Peterson has been, those repairs are being made as well, and we're continuing to partner over, over the next three years with Ascension to continue to upgrade Roy Peterson Park as well. So with that, it's just kind of directing funding towards those parks. The repairs and maintenance of that, the other equipment in the old school park is a significant cost. And so looking for direction from council as far as removal and decommissioning that park in addition to the removal of the swings, digger, and tire swing immediately to make sure that all safety concerns have been addressed from a city perspective.
I do have a second portion of my case. We've made sure that this park system is something that's like industrial, will stand up to years of wear and tear.
In addition, we were given a square footage of what that park layout would be and have assessed that with what the, what space is available at the main city park as well.
Paul?
The removal of the swings there that have been there forever, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of relocating those. They've been here in town for my entire lifetime and that, and there's never really been any problems with them. I'm just wondering if that's an option. I know the, the, the problem with it is the, the pathway in front of it that's, that's there, but I just know that there's going to be, people will question why, why we moved that and, and the other part. And if, if we do remove some of these things, we have to make sure that we inform the public, you know, of all the reasoning of, of why and that, and get that information out there. Because I'm sure there, there are people who'll show up and they'll be like, where's the park, you know, and then things can, there can be rumors and all kinds of things like that, that, that happen. And I'm, I'm also wondering what role the park board will play in some of this stuff, like what playground equipment we would be purchasing and stuff. What, what all would, would the park board be involved with on this? Because I think that it's important to have, you know, some of the members of the park board put in their two cents on all, all these issues.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that forward. So the park board has been involved as far as the inspection reports and the initial dialogue. They actually made the recommendation to council in order for the initial removal of the old school park as well. So there has been a lot of park board engagement. What we, there was not a park board meeting in October. And so this dialogue will happen with the park board as well. But in order to make sure that we're addressing the repairs that need to happen in, in, in immediate fashion, we had to bring a lot of this dialogue forward to council. And then in order for council to have the, the enough information for decision-making, we did have to bring forward what the long-term plan was from an administrative perspective. So this information will be shared back with the park board. Though there will be a ton of engagement from the park board moving forward like there has been. And they initially did make the recommendation to, for, to council to remove the old school park.
Yeah. And I appreciate everybody for all the time that they've taken on this and revisited this issue. I just had concerns at, at first about funding and all that, and all this came up. I wanted to know what the funding grants were available and things like that. You guys have done a good, good job of answering those questions. I feel more comfortable in making my decisions with this information that you have all worked hard to provide us with. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Their motion to remove the equipment, to decommission and remove the old school equipment? Is there, can we get a motion to remove the swings? Remove the digger, the tire swing, and decommission and remove the old school equipment that was called out for being in major need of repair?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second?
Further discussion?
I do have one question. Is it possible, Phil, to move that metal swing set down to like where we're taking out the school?
Would be a great question for who is this company that we've been talking to? Because I'm not a safety person. I'm not a, yeah, sure.
Don't they decommission it?
I, I have no idea. Like this is. We're, we're trying to help out the best we can, but this isn't what we're training in. This isn't our expertise, so I can't answer that, sorry.
Yeah. You know, there'd be some, if. You know, there'd be, if, the swings obviously have to be moved to make that safe with that in front of there. And we just haven't had time to look at the possibility of how hard it is to move that or if there's another good location in some area that you could put that in there. Obviously, you know, if there's a huge cost in removing it and to another area, and it all takes time and that, but it's just, I, I just feel that that swing set has been part of the park for so long that I, me myself, I would, I would hate to see that it, it get removed completely, but I just don't know what the, what the options are right now.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's carry.
New business, Rebels Home Run Club Field Improvement Request.
Hi, I'm Michelle Washi. I am the Rebels Home Run Club Summer Director, and I am working on, um, getting donations to put in a couple batting cages. Um, a single one at the Twilight Field and then a double one down at Double League Field. Um, I've been working with Phil here a little bit on, um, the city location lines and whatnot and putting that in. We're looking to put it in, uh, this spring of this next year. Um, I have a few other meetings that I have attended, um, to gather funds. Um, and from you guys, I'm looking for maybe three thousand dollars from the gambling fund just to go towards the cages. Um, we don't have, um, we're looking for that, and we're, I mean, we're still coming up a little bit short, but we have some time until the spring. Um, and then I don't know if you guys need like cost breakdowns or anything or anything like that, or maybe drawing. I can send that through email.
Yeah, we've already been having this.
I'm sorry.
If we're, if we're taking, uh, a request for money, we should probably have some information on what we're giving money there. Since we have enough, I guess.
Like as far as like the cost breakdown?
Yeah, what, what you have, I guess, if you, so we could have it on record.
Sure, I can send a copy of that. I mean, I do have it here, um, so I can kind of like list it off. It's for, um, I, like in my letter here, it was about, um, concrete flooring and foam and netting, tension kits, poles, holes, and backstops. Um, obviously that doesn't include any labor or anything like that. The Rebels One Run Club will have that all donated by volunteers from our club. Um, but yeah, I can email, email that over and that can be shared for sure.
I have a question for the city. So this would be paid for pretty much by them, but put on the city's fields. What liability does that create for the city if somebody gets hurt and needs batting cages?
So the city already has insurance for any activities and or, um, events that occur on city property. So, so we are covered for all of that. Um, essentially, I, what council received in their packet is a, is a breakdown of our gambling fund. Uh, this request does meet, uh, the requirements in order to be able to fund, um, from a city perspective. Wanted to provide council with the current balance and, and, um, you'll see that both recently the, um, flight pool, um, was, the flight pool contribution was taken out of the gambling fund as well. Um, so you can see after what a three thousand dollar amount would, would, contribution would do to the, um, total fund balance at the end. Um, we've had a lot of collaborative dialogue with the Home Run Club. Uh, we've worked together on a lot of projects they have done. They've made a lot of significant improvements to the parks. Um, and so there, there's been a great working rapport here between both entities. Um, do you have any concerns from a public work standpoint in, in the parks as far as activities and or the installation of these?
Uh, mainly just long-term maintenance. Who would be in charge of it? Who would be responsible for it? Um, is it something the city would want to sign a maintenance agreement on with the association saying that the city's not on the hook?
You're saying like, like if a net breaks or...
Net breaks or whatever, maybe the concrete...
Because mowing still is done by, like, maintenance as far as, like, mowing around them is still...
Yes, mowing would obviously be done by the city. Uh, we have multiple areas in town that are, should have some maintenance agreement of some type of look at with them. And the, the city hasn't, hasn't done anything with that yet. Um, but I mean, that, that's always, always something that comes to my mind is, what does this look like in five years? I know it sounds great right now, and it'll be fantastic in the spring.
Yeah.
But in five years, what's it look like?
Right.
So, and that's something for council, obviously.
Well, my other concern is, you know, vandalism, that's always done down by the old school. Is this something that they're moved to, to, you know? I guess we got...
I mean, you'd hope not.
Our finest over there that's swimming through there. But yeah, and I guess vandalism can happen anywhere, so.
Any other questions? We don't take action on this.
Is that the recommendation? Or do we have a recommendation?
Um, the project does meet all the requirements for the gambling fund. The city is, um, the city does have an obligation to, to review. Ryan, uh, can you speak to what you've learned about from the gambling fund contribution as far as if this, if the project meets the requirement, the city does have an obligate to, an obligation to, um, issue funds, but the amount is up to council?
Yeah, the amount's up to council as long as it meets all the criteria, and they're nonprofit, that kind of stuff. Um, you definitely fall into, you know, the category. We've, um, donated to the Home Run Club in the past. Like she said, it's a really great relationship with them. Um, I don't see any issue with it as far as legality or if you need to table it. Uh, we, I know we tabled the, the flight pool one as well, um, if you want to see more of a breakdown from them. But I also don't see a problem with approving it now contingent upon getting those, those set items. So yeah, however you guys want to approach it, I guess.
One thing you need to remind council of as well is we did engage in a, in a lease, um, for utilization of the fields, and that was something that was new, that was implemented with this, um, administrative team and, and the leadership at the Home Run Club. So we do have a lease with, um, the Home Run Club that essentially dictates a lot of the, the fine print, uh, relationship and dynamic, and so this would fall into our existing, um, agreement and partnership with them too.
Any other questions?
Just ownership, I guess, once it becomes city property. I think that there has to be something in place that becomes city property and not removal. Certain items, obviously the cement and...
Is that something you want to see prior to...
Just, just as, just a general understanding that there's certain things that once it becomes done on city property, it becomes cities. Just to understand that.
Is that something that's in with the lease currently?
And it won't list, the lease won't list the batting cages specifically, but the lease does talk about all of those items being city property and at the city fields.
Do you want to make a motion to go ahead with the donation for three thousand dollars? How do you view the funds?
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All's carry.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Am I allowed to go back and ask a question? I had both, uh, the quotes on the, on the park stuff?
Uh, you can, but I mean, that's going to come to the park board because that's just a quote for, all we voted on was to the removal of the stuff.
Okay, okay.
So we're going to have ample opportunity to discuss the quote stuff after it goes in the park board and we get a recommendation from them.
Okay.
So what we'll do, hey, thank you for, for clarifying that. So what we'll do is we always like to have two quotes anyway, so we'll take these, we'll get another quote, and then we'll, we'll bring those to park board and, and to council for final removal. And the interim, all those repairs are being made so that, um, the city is prioritizing safety. Um, so we'll see those quotes come through once we get that second.
Okay, now, I was wondering about the removal quote and...
Yeah, yep. We just, we also, before we got that second quote, wanted to know specifically council's direction on what we were removing, so we didn't get a quote on something that we, an activity that we weren't going to conduct.
Sure. Is there any question?
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Minnesota Hosted Representative Capital Investment Committee, 2020, because it's a bond you're to where...
Yeah, so the city had an exciting day yesterday. Um, city staff, elected officials, um, the mayor, um, we, we all engaged with, um, the city engineers and then the House of Representatives, uh, Finance Committee. So a presentation was given up at the Sewer Line Event Center. Um, attendance was strong. Uh, there was a coach bus of about thirty-plus, um, members of the, uh, Finance Committee who attended. Uh, we also had support from Carlton County there as well, um, through their administrator, their, um, BDA, and also through the county's lobbyists that they've hired. So, um, a lot of great discussion was had after the presentation. There was a significant amount of questions by those in attendance. Um, we did get a lot of positive feedback and then supported the county in their presentation as well. So I wanted council to see, um, the PowerPoint that was utilized for the presentation and provide an update as far as next steps are concerned. Obviously, decisions, bonding bill decisions will be made in the next session here. Um, and so, uh, the city is continuing to, um, do everything we can, um, to, to capture monies for improvements and prioritize growth and economic development. The project outlined a three-point-one million dollar sewer lining project of all city sewer mains and manholes, um, for a, um, anticipated significant reduction in, uh, capacity at the sewer ponds that then allows for development, whether it be the housing, um, the residential housing development and/or, um, other opportunities for growth in the surrounding areas that, you know, Sand Lake Resort or through the district, whatever those might be.
Questions, Chris?
Was there any representation or anybody there from DOC or MSOP or state agencies to...
Um, there was not, but we have had significant engagement with them recently on, on, you know, a lining project that is grant-funded. Um, but there was not, um, anybody present yesterday.
Anything else?
I'd like to thank Chris, or, or Doug and Melissa for presenting. They did a very good job.
Thank you.
Uh, fifteen-inch clay trunk sewer line, folks.
Yes, so that project that we talked about, the collaborative lining project with MSOP and DOC as part of the design phase, we wanted to have that infrastructure televised. Also received two different quotes in the packet for these, for televising and such. Um, Superintendent Edner, do you have anything to add?
I do not. We have used both these contractors before. Both of them came on site, both got the same bid packet. Um, I would recommend Nelson Sanitation as their own capacity.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Nelson Sanitation rental quote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All's carry.
Annual Appointments, Tree Committee Designations.
Uh, yes, as part of our, um, the grant we received to do a tree inventory analysis in the city, we do need to establish a tree committee. It's also a commitment, um, based on the city being a, having the designation of being a tree, Tree City USA City. And so we have worked through this. We have talked about it from a council perspective and looking for formal approval of those designations.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the tree committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All's carry.
Reports of correspondence, uh, WW Gosh Associates Inc. Corp. Uh, City Looks Like Lit Station Inspection Reports. Uh, City Looks Like Truth of Taxation Meeting Notice, December tenth, twenty twenty-five. Carlton Drug, County Drug Protection Coalition Meeting at September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Description Drug Take That Date Flyer, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. And a sweeping will, will out two-twenty-six Wadecrosky Event Proposal. Any questions, any of them?
Yeah, uh, Phil, could you explain a little bit on that pump number two there? I think that was, uh, something that was very positive that we were able to get done.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, that's on the, the main lift station. We had a couple of years now of, uh, some really ugly estimates to rehab, uh, that lift station upwards to three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, you guys approved those replacement parts that we weren't totally sure were going to work at first, but turns out they were a direct fit, and it's like it came in at fifteen thousand bucks to fix one part. So, you know, we're going to be, less than fifty grand, we'll have the whole station rebuilt. So save the city two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fantastic.
Excellent part.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, yeah, the, I've never heard of the Water Cross event before, so we did some, look, we may not, is this something that we've done before?
Yeah, they've had a big deal.
Yeah, so, so the proposal came in, um, and again, there was no park board meeting, um, in October. And so, um, we made a commitment that the proposal will be shared in reports and correspondence. So that's council's informed of the request to bring back the event. And then this, um, proposal was also shared with the park board and then will be discussed at the park board level, uh, at November's meeting and then brought back to council.
Let's plan it, one comment on that.
Yes, go ahead.
As reading it, um, it talks about, uh, hosting it during any available summer weekend that does not overlap. Um, I don't think that's going to be a big goal very well with, um, the citizens of Moose Lake. Um, I think before the, you know, water opens or kind of later in the season, um, would be best, but, you know, summer, the campground's full and kids are swimming and it'd be very hard to, um, shut that down and tell the campground people, you know, oh, sorry you came up this weekend, but you can't use the lake. So just keep that in mind as...
That's extremely valuable feedback. Is there any timeframe that the event used to occur during? I recall.
I believe it was always the first weekend in June.
I think that, that it was...
It was, it was cold.
It was cold, it was cold. It was like the first weekend in June.
Yeah. Before things, um, kind of the water and...
Okay.
But I believe that's what it used to be was, well, that weekend there.
I mean, I don't think it was fully warm, but...
Yeah, right. Okay, understood. Thank you.
It'd be nice with, if the campground was closed.
Yeah.
Do it in a fall when it's still nice out. I, I would think.
Okay.
Just keep that in, excellent.
Thank you for the feedback.
Any other?
Uh, Committee Board Meeting Minutes. Looks Like Area Fire Protection District Meeting, July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Park and Recreation Meeting Minutes, there was no meeting in October. Announcements, Looks Like City Council, Regular City Council made on Wednesday, November twelfth, four p.m. here. Looks Like City Council, Tree, Truth of Taxation Meeting, Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, here at six p.m. Looks Like Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, October fifteenth, twelve p.m. in the city conference room. Looks Like Water Lake, Wednesday, October twenty-second, one p.m. in the Water Lake office. Looks Like Housing, Re, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board, Monday, November tenth, eleven a.m. Billside Terrace. Looks Like Area Fire Protection District, Tuesday, October fourteenth, six thirty p.m. at Emergency Response Center. Looks Like Parks and Recreation Board, Monday, November third, five p.m. in the city conference chambers.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.